Like to call the meeting to order. All board members are present. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
I'll second the motion.
Any comments, Don?
No comments tonight.
No new retirees this week, huh? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Policy committee.
We met Wednesday, May seventeenth, and just a handful of policies just updated to MSB to match MSBA. And then on the facility use one, there was no changes to the policy, but there was updates to the pricing and some procedures going forward.
See if yours is on.
Mine's on.
Check the power.
Hear me?
Check the volume on your speaker.
Are your speakers on? Make sure that the speakers next to you are on.
Mine's on.
Mine isn't lit up.
Hello? Hello?
Now it's good, I think.
Can you hear this?
Yeah, now it's good.
Southwest Metro.
Southwest Metro had their meeting last Tuesday, and it was the last meeting before summer. We take June and July off, and we'll have our next meeting in August. At that meeting, we had a very good presentation from the staff and a couple of students that work in the health fields area of the Southwest Metro co-op. And they did a very nice presentation. They have a very strong enrollment in this program. And one of the persons that, one of the students that came and spoke to us is actually EMT. He got trained as an EMT, and he's doing that now. Some work in nursing homes. And this particular person that was trained in EMT is a senior, and he plans to go on and become a physician. He'll do pre-med next year and then go on from there. So it's a very good program, very good program.
And they took the EMT through the co-op?
Yes, mhm, yep.
Cool.
They do programs kind of geared to what the kids are interested in doing and get certification in there for the nurses, nurses training type of work, the working in nursing homes and things like that. Yeah, they kind of gear it to what the needs of the students are.
Anything from CPAC?
Nothing, no. There was no meeting for the end of the year.
Any community ed updates?
No.
Community ed, the outdoor pool will open on Saturday, probably Sunday and Monday also. The aquatic center has been moved back to July first. The grand opening for the aquatic center will be on July sixth. And so far, we've got about twenty or two thousand seven hundred and forty-five registrations for a summer session. If you want to offer anything, you're supposed to hand it in by June first. The new brochure will come out on April first.
August first?
You got anything?
August first.
Pardon?
Was the brochure going to come out August first?
August first, what'd I say?
August first.
It will come out August first. I'm confused enough though, it is.
Okay, and then I'm just going to add, thank you, Don, for all the updates, and I appreciate all that. The opening for the CEC is September tenth? Okay, I just wanted to add that. Thank you for all the other updates.
Wellness committee.
That one's a no.
Early childhood.
Yes, we met last Thursday, and the coalition received another $10,000 grant from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, and this will be used on materials for social emotional development for preschoolers. We also received another book grant for next year, and this is for the book crates that are in various businesses throughout the district. And they've decided that rather than rotate these crates to different businesses, they're going to keep them where they are, and then if there's interest, add more to new locations. Let's see. The Let's Play Saturdays was very successful, and they want to do that again next year. The website launch was successful. That was done at the last Let's Play Saturdays. And there's interest in looking at possibly trying to provide transportation to preschool from daycares and private homes, if there's any way feasible to do that. That's it.
Thank you. Superintendent updates?
Okay, I'm going to just update you first in regards to the unfortunate situation that happened last Friday, where we had a number of pigeons and a pheasant released in the building after midnight and after the custodians left. And I did get an email, you know, questioning why would we close school? I mean, it's just be like being on a farm. But obviously, with the birds being in there overnight for six hours, it was quite the mess. Our custodians did a great job trying to clean everything up in time and, first of all, capturing the pigeons, which is when you have fifty-foot ceilings, it's not an easy task. So it was decided at eight-thirty that could not be done, and the decision made, send high school students home, I guess by car at eight-forty-five a.m., and then beginning on the buses at nine-ten. We do have four students that have admitted to involvement in this entire situation. I should also mention just about canceling school, it wasn't just about health and safety too, it's a distraction to the learning environment. It would not have been a good situation. And we did check with the Department of Health on the health and safety thing too, so they confirmed what we believed our decisions should be. All the birds are now out of the building. We did have, I think, three this weekend that we had custodians come in. Just so you know, there'll be part of the consequences, obviously, will be restitution. We had to bring in an outside agency for cleaning services. Obviously, we had an extra bus route, another loop. We had lost revenue in food service. I mean, we had perishable food items that had to go. And then, not to mention, lost wages for some of our people in food service and also paraprofessionals. So not a good thing. We have not decided on the consequences yet. We're still meeting with that, talking to our attorney, and be making a recommendation on that shortly. Probably by Wednesday, we'll be informing the parents. So I guess that's about it on that situation. On a positive note, we had, I know we had honors banquet after we had our last board meeting, so our honors banquet on May tenth went very well. We had a great turnout, I think eighty-six thousand dollars in scholarships awarded, so that was very positive. Last Wednesday, we also had our retirement social and had a good time with everyone there, and we got a great group of retirees, I'll tell you that, and a very caring group that had made a very positive impact on our school district. You know, we're finishing up fine arts with the concerts, those are actually all finished up, and we got section play started with our teams this upcoming week. The first one, softball, starts tomorrow. They play at home against Lakeville South, and we are the number-one seeded team in the section in four A softball, and actually, I think ranked eighth in the state, so it's, they've had a very successful season. I think they're seven, eighteen and two or seventeen and two, so it's been a great year. So we wish them the best along with all the other teams. And the last thing, forecast for Friday. I've been charting it every day now for the last eight days. Still looks pretty good, seventy-four, cloudy. We can handle that. So we'll see what happens, but save your progress, keep your fingers crossed.
You did forget something. This afternoon, we were over at the garage and they were showing.
Oh, Super Mileage, yep. I was over at Super Mileage. Don, did you get over there too? Yep. And our Super Mileage team, under the direction of Kevin Bear, we have eight students. They go up to Brainerd every year, they design a car, they work on that. And I think it was two-hundred-and-fifty-seven miles per gallon they ended up getting their car to, which took six out of, I think, thirty schools and ninety cars. So I think there'll be a write-up in the New Prague Times on that, and they had a little open house. I know that was, weren't notified too much in advance, but it was good to visit with the kids and their advisor, Mr. Bear, so very proud of them too.
Thank you. Onto our action items. The aquatic center, we need to approve the operating agreement.
And Bryce, you might want to lower your mic too, a little bit there, that one, yeah. Closest to you.
Or both.
Or both, yeah.
So some of this information, we've gone over a little bit before, but this is the same power point that's gone to the city for their approval as well. So the hours of operation for the outdoor pool would be from one to seven, and then from twelve to one for Monday, Wednesday, Fridays for lap swim. And then the aquatic center opening on the first, from Sunday, from ten to six. Saturday must have got cut off in there. Monday through Friday, from five-thirty a.m. to nine p.m., and then Saturday from seven to seven. And then some of the amenities, the bottom, we're missing part of the bottom screen. Our site. The two whippets, the action track, the action tower, the Bogey Fit mats for fitness classes can be used kind of like a stand-up paddleboard, multipurpose fitness classes, exercises, open swim, maybe some rentals, multiple options with the Fit Mat, the Key Log, and the two climbing walls in the deep end, something very similar to this picture here. And then the volleyball net and the basketball hoop. The basketball hoop would be portable, plastic portable, can be moved from the rec pool to the competition pool, shallow and deep end. Inner tube water, inner tube basketball, regular basketball, and then the volleyball net would be in the shallow end of the competition pool. The events.
Bryce, just one thing, on the amenities there, that was money that was kicked in by the city of New Prague to, you know, a lot of it's for recreation-type things that are outside our curriculum, for example. Go ahead.
So when you get to the last page in the budget, you'll see a revenue and an expense for both eighty-four thousand, and that's, that eighty-four thousand is coming from. The events, some of the events that we'll be able to host, high school swim meets, the Neptune Swim and Dive meets, renting it out possibly for some other meets, some lock-ins. We've already had a couple requests for some overnight lock-ins, some holiday specials, maybe an Easter egg hunt in the pool or a Christmas tree around that season. With the basketball courts right next to the pool, we're looking at doing some surf and turf nights where they could come in and swim, they could play basketball, shoot hoops, volleyball, pickleball, all sorts of those options in the gym. And then basketball, volleyball, underwater hockey tournaments, which is that picture right there. Some of the other events that we'll have with that video display scoreboard, we'll be able to do dive-in movies and then hosting some other competitions, milk carton, cardboard boat races, fly fishing demos, maybe putting some canoes and kayaks in there if we move the bulkhead all the way down to be a thirty-three-meter pool. And then some theme nights, Hawaiian luau's, Survivor nights, multiple options for those. And as far as some of the programming goes, the birthday parties would be two hours of a wet classroom party room that's on the pool deck, and then ten passes into the pool. And so we would offer two options. They could either do a standard, basic option of just ten passes to the pool and the room rental, or we would offer an option where they could select a birthday cake and/or cupcakes, a slice of pizza, and some drink. So we would have that pre-arranged store in our concession stand, pull it out for their birthday party. That's all set up in that meeting room. And then learn-to-swim programs. One more thing on the birthday parties, the birthday party kid would get a towel that would have the Aquatic Center logo embroidered on it. So pink or blue towel, depending on their choice. And then learn-to-swim program, year-round lessons, private swim lessons, and adult lessons. Fitness classes would be included in the membership. They could also purchase a fitness class punch card or a daily fitness class admission. And the daily fitness class admission and the punch card would get you into that fitness class, or if you wanted to stay and swim laps after or before the class. Some of those options there would be the Bogey Fit Mat, deep water, shallow water, possibly an Aqua Zumba class, lots of options there. So we're looking for more people who want to teach some of those classes. So if you know anybody, you can send them our way. And some therapy and rehab that with that current channel, water walking could be used for that and possibly some physical therapy. And the, one of the programs we'll be offering is the Neptune Swim and Dive for the kids six and up. It'll be a year-round program with two head coaches and then some, you know, numerous opportunities for kids of all ages and all levels. This would be our fees for the Swim and Dive Club. If there are multiple kids in the family, each additional kid would, and would result in a five percent discount for that family, up to fifteen percent. So we named the groups kind of similar to the Neptune name, Pluto, Apollo, and Jupiter, kind of like your beginner, intermediate, advanced groups, and that would be our fees there. And then there's also a one-time or per-year annual fee that gets paid to Minnesota Swimming and USA Swimming to be a member. And then depending on the meet, there'd be meet fees associated with that as well. Somewhat similar to the Dive Club, with those fees, there's a USA Dive fee associated with that depending on their level of twelve, twenty, or seventy-five dollars for that year.
Bryce, is this club ready to go as soon as the pool opens, basically, or when would the, do you have any idea when the club?
That's the plan. We're still in the process of paperwork that has to get submitted to USA Swimming and Minnesota Swimming, and then they give us the official approval and the club charter. So that's in progress, but that should be the plan if all goes well on their end with the paperwork. So this policy rules and procedures. It's not all-inclusive, but there's a couple of things that we want to make you aware of. There hasn't been a set standard of kind of some age ranges. So if you take a look at this first one, kids seven and up will demonstrate seven years of swim, twenty-five yards of swimming to a lifeguard prior to using the whippet's diving board and climbing walls. The other couple that are important to note, kids under the age of seven or any child, regardless of their age, in a life jacket must be accompanied by a person sixteen or older in the water. And then the one right below that, kids ages seven, eight, and nine may be in the pools as long as their parent or guardian is on the pool deck. And we got the one below that, from ten and over, to be in the hot tub based on that ten age range, to be in the pools without a parent or guardian in the water or on the pool deck.
Will you keep a list of the kids who pass that swimming test for every time they return to the pool, to be able to go on the climbing wall and diving board?
Yeah, we could try to come up with a system to do that, whether it's a wristband or something like that. I don't know what it is right now, but we'll try to come up with an easy way to make that work.
Yeah, I don't, they don't really have any of these rules at the outdoor pool.
Right, some of them have, there hasn't been that seven, eight, and nine written in the past, so we wanted to make sure you're aware that this is in place.
And you'll do it at the outdoor pool as well?
Yep, these rules will be the same indoor and outdoor. So this page here would be the memberships for an annual pass. You'll note there on the top, we'll be offering a twenty percent off of those prices through August thirtieth. So if they come in now, it would be twenty percent off of those prices up through the end of August.
And you've set these fees based on similar fees of pools that were comparable to ours, correct?
Yeah, there's nothing completely comparable to ours, but we took a list of probably ten to fifteen across the state and based it off of those fifteen.
Yeah, and I was going to say, the other presentation you showed the city did have those comparables on it, right?
Yep.
Because I saw that slide or that presentation.
Yeah, maybe it was that one.
Yeah, and it did have the comparables to the YMCA, kind of thing.
Yeah, YMCA's, lifetimes, other city facilities, other private gyms.
Yeah, very few have what we have. We have a lot of amenities, a lot of really neat things, you know, in it that school districts usually just have a pool. And then, then of course, then you've got the YMCA's or you've got the Lifetime Fitness, so it's, it was really hard to compare, but I think he did, Bryce has done a good job, you know, doing the best we can at what we can in trying to get a price point that is best.
I think the committee went round and round in trying to determine what this membership fee was, and I think like Tim said, Bryce did a great job of comparing, and this is what we're going to go with, I think.
And with the indoor aquatic center not opening until July first, at the last joint powers meeting, it was proposed to offer the month of June for free if they were to purchase an annual membership or three-month membership. So if they buy it now, they wouldn't get to start, they wouldn't be billed until July first if they were to have it taken from their checking account. So if they come in now, instead of having fifty-two weeks, it would be fifty-eight weeks, if that makes sense on the membership length. The three-month membership price is here, again, twenty percent off of those prices. Then the punch cards, there wouldn't be a discount on those because there already is a discount on those prices. Fifteen punches for each separate outdoor, indoor, outdoor, and fitness punch card. And then our daily admission prices.
Let me just comment on that too. On the daily admission prices, it's five dollars, and if you get the punch card, it'd be the equivalent of four fifty. And again, looking at what we have with huge pool, all the amenities, zero-depth pool, the shallow, the current channel, I should say, the hot tub, Montgomery's is four dollars. So I think if you look at the punch card or the daily admission, it gives you a true price point on that, but it's a good deal, and I think it's very competitive.
It gets you into both pools, facilities.
Indoor and outdoor, not New Prague and Montgomery.
And I don't remember if we showed this slide last time or not, but the number of visits per month to make it at a five-dollar daily admission. This would be a rough estimate of our projected budget for the staffing for lifeguards, fitness instructors, and front desk for the first couple of years.
Will you always have someone at the front desk, if it's open?
Whether it's a lifeguard and they're in a rotation, or it's somebody who's just going to be working the front desk, so they'd be able to sell those memberships, those daily fees, anytime the building's open. So the budget for expenses here, this left column would be your zero, and then one, two, three, four, and five. And then for the revenue, again, your zero and then one through five across the top.
When we did the preliminary studies, it was about a hundred thousand dollar loss, is that what?
Yeah. For most pools, and we're talking, when we did the, checked it out, did our research, it was mainly, we were looking at just school districts that just had a pool, that was it. So the way we have our setup, obviously, we have more expenses, but we have potential for much higher revenue. And according to our consultant, Dwayne Prell, I mean, you know, we might, you know, project to lose money the first year, but we're optimistic that as it goes here, we'll do, we'll do better than that, put it that way.
I just have a.
Better.
Basically, you start adjusting after the first year.
Yeah, it's, these are all projections. I mean, it's estimates, whatever you want to say. But we're expecting big things.
Yeah, second year.
And Bryce, I know your list isn't all-inclusive yet. For example, when the kids are out of school, I'm sure you'll have something planned in the community ed brochure when they're on break or MEA.
Yes, yep. I've already been asked a couple times for next March, twenty eighteen.
I kind of figured that, but I just.
There's some planning going on already.
Are these figures including the outdoor pool too?
These aren't the outdoor pool.
Okay, so.
Did you say it does?
Does not.
And I should say this too, over the years, the outdoor pool for us, our part of the joint powers agreement, we've pretty much just barely stayed in the black. We haven't lost, we haven't lost money with the outdoor pool.
Mostly because the city's responsible for all of the maintenance and.
Operations, yep. Thank you.
It would be interesting with the weather to see, since you'll be open regardless of how the weather is. Be interesting to see the comparison with the outdoor and the indoor.
Any other questions? Thank you for all the work you've done on this. It's very interesting.
Bryce put a lot of time into it, and Janelle helped quite a bit. There's a ton of time put in.
You can see, I have a question, though. Who came, or unless you want to divulge it, I'm just, I like the name Neptune, so I was just wondering how that came about, if you want to give the history behind.
That's a good question. So it was basically just a Google search, and another one had a good logo that looked clean and inviting, so that's the one we decided to go with.
I like it.
Thanks, Bryce, doing a great job, and appreciate the information. Keep giving us updates as we move along here, but it's going to be an exciting time here, a little over a month when everything's said and done, so. You didn't mention too, you want to talk about the, is the grand opening, have we decided that?
Yeah, July sixth, Don mentioned July sixth.
Yeah, why don't you mention that? Why don't you mention that? Excuse, the lessons got pushed back till, what day? Lessons get pushed back?
Well, we'll still offer some lessons starting the nineteenth, outdoors, yep. And then we'll offer a couple evening ones outside after open swim at a little after seven. So we had to adjust a couple of them. So, well, still, it's that first session that's starting the nineteenth that we had to make some changes to. Um, so we'll offer them in the morning at nine thirty instead of starting inside on the nineteenth at eight o'clock. So there's a little bit of less options moving them outside. So hopefully we're, we're able to accommodate a lot of them.
But letters were sent out and so they have, parents have the option on what they wanna do. It's just June fifteenth wasn't gonna happen, so. Um, we had two weeks of lessons, right, that were affected. So July first will be the first day it's open. That's on a Saturday. And it'll be open for anyone until that whole next week until we start swim lessons then on the.
Lessons start on the tenth, that Mon- that Monday.
And then July sixth, is that Wednesday or Thursday?
Thurs- Thursday.
Thursday, July sixth, that'll be grand opening where, what's gonna take place in a grand opening?
It's in the works.
That's a grand opening.
Grand open.
Free swim.
Yes.
Free swim.
And the ones that sign up for the outdoor have that option of moving back to the tenth of July to do indoor if they so choose, correct?
Right, we gave them a couple of options. If there was room, um, or a refund.
Right.
All right. All right, thanks.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Aquatics Center budget as presented.
Second, we all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have preliminary budget from Sandy.
All right, um, I'm gonna just kick this off before she goes into details here, so. Um, we got a lot of moving parts going on right now, especially with our state legislature. Uh, when we talk about budget, uh, we're not sure what's gonna happen. They're supposed to finish tonight, right? Well, we don't know about that, but, um, our budget will be affected by that, obviously. Uh, Sandy will talk about that. Uh, enrollment is a big thing. Um, and just, you know, with salaries going up, um, it's, uh, just trying to keep up with inflation. So we've had to tighten the belt this past, going into this next year. Um, we wanna be, and Sandy does a wonderful job here, and she's very, she needs to be conservative. We don't want to over project so with the numbers. And, and she's been very close on enrollment and, and with her budget, but the last couple of years, our fund balance has been going down a little bit. Um, but it's still over what our, our district goal is, and that's important to note too. Uh, but we're tightening our belt, uh, throughout the departments and buildings this past, going into this year. And then, um, we'll just have to see what the future brings, but we'll also have to discuss this summer too. About the renewal of the local operating, uh, levy too, cause that will be a factor in this whole thing. But can't do anything until you find out what, uh, support we have at the state legislature and what their decisions are. And so hopefully it's, it's gonna be as good as possible, right? And, uh, go from there. So Sandy, why don't you take it?
Okay, thank you. The first I just wanna talk a little bit about the sixteen seventeen projected year-end results. Uh, we basically ended last year with about twenty-six percent unassigned fund balance. If you remember, our goal is eight percent. Um, the revised budget showed about a seventeen percent and I think we're gonna end up around twenty percent. I'm expecting revenue to come in at about budget and expenses to come in almost three percent less than budget. For seventeen eighteen, revenue assumptions, we're basically still assuming the two eighty-five kindergarten, which was the enrollment projections that you received in November. We are currently at two ninety-two. Actually, I looked yesterday and it was two ninety-five, I believe. So we're, I mean, that number fluctuates from day to day, um, but the budget assumes two hundred and eighty-five. Overall, again, per the enrollment projections that you heard in November, we're, um, would say we'd go up eight sixteen students, which is only a plus point four percent overall. Uh, with all the building going on in New Prague, we're hoping that number will be higher. And again, we won't know that until, you know, August when the kids start coming to school. So right now I'm sticking with the projections that we have, um, based on the enrollment model that, that we have been using, that it's been pretty, very, very accurate.
You, uh, you talked on the formula, so the, what she's using is one point five percent. So if they do finish tonight, uh, pay attention to what that is. I mean, uh, I think the goal of all the local or the state education associations, whether it's MSB or whatever, they're hoping for two and two. Uh, but it's, they've been talking one point five for a lot too, so.
Right, I mean, I just decided to go, um, conservative this time around, one point five. I'm hoping to be able to update that in the June. Uh, final reading of the budget to two, two point oh, but right now it's one point five. I have two percent on special ed aid and then other revenue fairly flat. For staffing, this is the same staffing that I presented, uh, staffing changes that I presented in April. Um, the decrease at the elementary of one point three FTEs. At middle school, a net increase of point three three FTE. High school, there's a change. The next budget item actually talks about the ULA. We are going to be, um, making a change to our recommendations for world language that I made in April. And that will be increasing a little bit due to the college and schools Spanish. Um, enrollment increased enough to hold, um, college and schools Spanish, so that is increasing, so that's a change. So we have an overall increase of point two three three FTE at the high school at ALC next year. Special education, we're still at the two point oh specialist increasing due to large caseloads. Gifted and talented, we're still adding that, uh, point five utilizing gifted and talented reserve revenue. Buildings and grounds, still planning to add the one point oh custodian in August before school starts due to the middle school addition. And something that's brand new that I believe Tim emailed you about a couple of weeks ago. Point five assistant activities director to be offset by reduction to strength and conditioning, strength and conditioning coaches and other expenses yet to be determined. Other things about the preliminary budget, I put in another district contingency. We've never needed it, but I, I like to have that. That's part of the reason we come in below budget. Just, I just like to have that sitting around. I do have the seventy-five thousand dollars for turf replacement. Um, I would recommend that we not do that, um, just simply because now we have the long-term facilities maintenance revenue. We're a, a, able to sell bonds for turf replacement. So this budget does include it, but I would recommend that we not include that going forward, just because I don't think it's necessary. Uh, if you're okay with that. Um, I don't see that further severance commitments are necessary right now. We will be making the big teacher payout at the end of June. And then we just basically have, um, some miscellaneous, um, severance payments out there right now. And for the next couple of years, I do feel like we have enough committed to handle the next few years. So I'm not gonna recommend another severance commit, more money to severance. Next year we have to buy eight special ed vans. Um, they are aging out and there's really nothing we can do about that. But we do have medical assistance and federal funds to pay for those. This year we bought three and next year we have to buy eight.
How many do we have?
Um, gosh, with the minibuses and stuff now, I mean, we'll, we have eleven vans, but then we also have some minibuses that we purchased. So I'm assuming we have eleven plus, what do we have, three or four mini, minibuses? Three minibuses, I believe, yeah. And these.
So they'll all be new after next year.
Right, yeah, you know, many, many years ago before I got here, we, we did a very big purchase through the Minnesota State contract. Um, lease vehicles and they're all aging out and there's nothing we can do about that. Um, I should also mention that we are gonna be adding an additional bus. We have been replacing our buses at two per year. We're gonna be going to three per year. Again, because they're aging out and we need to step up our, our, um, our school bus purchases. I also have a general fund chargeback for the Aquatics Center usage for sports and FIAED. Basically, we have agreed with the city of New Prague to split operating losses. It's basically to be our share of operating losses. That's thirty-five thousand dollars for this year and about fifty thousand dollars for next year. We have a twelve percent increase in health insurance for our non-certified staff. We covered that at the last board meeting. We're moving to self-insurance and we did get a twelve percent premium increase. And then you'll notice one expenditure is actually coming off and that is the bus garage addition is now paid for this year. Uh, just in time to renovate it again and add on to our bus garage. But that is now paid for, so that fifty-two, fifty-three thousand dollars is coming out of our budget for seventeen eighteen.
Oh, you turned that, oop, sorry.
I was gonna ask you on the turf replacement, is it every seven years?
You know, it's.
Or seven to ten?
Yeah, I think they were saying ten to twelve.
Ten to tw- ten to twelve.
Okay.
But we don't need to, we were setting aside seventy-five thousand, we don't need to do that anymore.
Okay.
I really don't think we need to not with our LTFM and allowing, you know, bond sale. We'll have a roof coming up at the high school. As well as, um, the turf, that that won't be for another ten years or so. And like I say, we do have the ability to sell bonds for our large maintenance projects now, so I really don't think that's necessary, um, to do.
So seventeen eighteen preliminary budget will not include that seventy-five thousand dollars?
Right.
You said it does now, right?
It does now, but I wanted to check with you. Actually, I would, I would say that we don't even need to do it for sixteen seventeen. I have seventy-five thousand dollars in there for sixteen seventeen. We also have seventy-five thousand dollars that's already committed. So I think I'd like to bring that down to zero. I just don't think it's necessary to do that anymore.
And then would that go into the general fund then?
Unassigned fund balance, yep. And at any time in the future, you could always recommit that if you want to. Um, you could always change your mind on that. I know Jerry, I wanted to check with you, cer- especially on that, cause that's something that you had requested that we do.
Right, right. If you feel confident that selling the bonds will work, I don't have a problem.
I do.
But then you're just kind of pushing the payment of it down until when you need it.
Yeah, and we have revenue to cover that. You know, we have revenue, um, for our long-term facilities maintenance and we're also gonna be able to be saving up some of that money every year. And so I do think our long-term facilities maintenance budget is gonna be in pretty good shape for the next ten years or so. Pending legislative change, which we have no control over.
Just don't change it back to the way it was.
Right, yeah, that's a really big issue for districts. You know, we were lucky to pass a bond and to take care of a lot of deferred maintenance projects. But let me tell you this, these big projects like roofs that cost two million dollars, districts don't have the money to do that and, and we wouldn't have either. Okay, the capital plan, the detail is posted in your, um, board packet. We have special projects of just over seventy-three thousand dollars. That's a combination of technology and buildings and grounds. We also have annual allocations of four hundred and seventy-six thousand. And, um, that is, um, um, just basic annual allocations that we have every year. Long-term facilities maintenance, we will have a new ten-year plan approved that will, will require the board to approve that. Um, by July thirty-first to be on our levy. But this basically is our, our, these are our projects. Along with health and safety, we have a total of about six hundred and ten thousand dollars. In fiscal year seventeen eighteen for fiscal, for long-term facilities maintenance. We have high school window caulking, elevator maintenance, electrical projects. Flooring painting and ceilings, mechanical systems, including the boiler room at the high school. Plumbing, in-house salaries, site surfaces, we have the path at Falcon Ridge. Some fencing, sidewalk repair, parking lot, um, repair and, um, coating. And then health and safety, so there's a lot of annual maintenance that we do with our facilities to keep them in good shape. Now for seventeen eighteen, for our first reading of our budget, we are showing, um, you know, our expenditures exceeding our revenue as Tim said. Um, per our basic plan, we'd end up at about eleven percent fund balance. I do believe it will come in better than that. I'm thinking, you know, more like fifteen or sixteen, but we definitely will be losing fund balance again next year. Again, pending legislative changes as well as the, um, um, enrollment. Enrollment can make a huge difference in this. This is our, um, fund balance history. Um, you can see it has been increasing steadily. It went up just very slightly in fifteen sixteen. In sixteen seventeen, we're projecting it to drop as well again in seventeen eighteen. Those, um, numbers got a little weird. I just noticed that, there's, um, a weird font there. And our committed funds are our restricted funds. Staff development, we're gonna be staying fairly stable, stable. It will drop a little bit next year. Uh, long-term facilities maintenance, we do expect to have a nice reserve at the end of next year. Um, operating capital, we're gonna be dropping a little bit. Um, gifted and talented will be dropping a little bit. Safe schools staying about the same. Severance will be dropping. And the turf, I'll take that off for next time. We won't have that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars there for next, for the seventeen eighteen. And then other funds I typically present in June, fund two, four, six and seven, I present in June. Um, next steps, um, June twenty-sixth, I'll have the preliminary budget for approval and it will include all funds. We need to have, start having the operating levy renewal discussion. Tim and I talked about having some discussion in June. At the, uh, work session and having some, uh, as well as the, um, board meeting in June. As well as having some, um, the decision, probably the recommendation in July. It has to be approved by August twenty-fifth and our board meeting in August is the twenty-eighth. So we'll either have to have a special meeting in August, um, at our workshop, or we'll have to approve it in July. September, we'll have updated enrollment numbers. That will be very helpful. Um, October, we'll have audit results and then in December, we'll have the final budget as usual. With the updated five-year projections and that sets off the planning for eighteen nineteen already.
Questions?
Yeah, that was, that's it for me.
Looks good.
Questions?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Pardon?
Pretty self-explanatory. We'll just all have to hope for the two percent, right?
Yeah, that'll add another about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue to us, which is very, very helpful. But I didn't get the updates today. I haven't watched the news, so I don't know what's going on.
I stay away from the news now, so.
I normally would get an email from one of my organizations, but I haven't and I haven't watched the news, so I don't have any idea what's going on in the capital right now, so.
I don't think some of the legislators know either, so.
They're still, they're still working on buffer strips or farmers and stuff right now, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Do the buffer strips?
Buffer strips, yes.
The buffer, the buffer strips around the wetlands?
Yes, they're still working on that.
Want clean ponds around here.
Yes.
No schools, but the ponds will be clean.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You.
Unrequested leave of absence update.
Yeah, so we normally, we have taken two steps already to put, uh, a, uh, Spanish teacher on ULA at a point one five six two FTE. We took all but the last step, which was supposed to be tonight, but now the college and schools class has enough, um, in, in enrollment, uh, registrations to have it. So we will not be ULAing. We will still be replacing the long-term sub that's at the middle school. That's a point five, so that is, part is still happening, but our overall FTE will stay at one point oh. So fortunately, we don't have to take that final step tonight.
Sounds good. A resolution for long-term facilities maintenance levy.
Yes, this is for the Southwest Metro Intermediate District. Uh, I'd like to call your attention to the comment that we have here. And I'm going to read it for the benefit of our, uh, audience that doesn't have this. Attached is a resolution to approve the Southwest Metro Intermediate District Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Levy. New Prague area schools' share is eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Every Southwest Metro member district needs to pass a resolution so they can access the new long-term facilities maintenance revenue. The superintendents and business managers have been informed and have agreed to the total amount as well as how it will be allocated to each member district. And I'd like to bring up one thing. If it were to be done without a, they have a formula to figure the assessment for each of the districts. And if we were to just divide it by the eleven members, our, uh, our amount would be roughly twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. But because there is a formula that they use as far as how much, uh, the districts, uh, use the programs. Uh, our share then drops down to eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. That's how we get to that figure. Rather than taking it and just dividing it by eleven.
So it's based on enrollment, basically.
Yes, and use, and use.
And this is approving our.
Our.
District levy for long-term facilities maintenance and then we pass that on to.
That we take that fund and apply it to the Southwest Metro, uh, Intermediate District. Okay, at this time then, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution approving the Southwest Metro Intermediate School District. Number two eighty-eight's long-term facility maintenance program budget. And authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the. and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Do I have a motion to consider that resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to consider the following resolution. The school board of Southwest Metro Intermediate School District Two Eighty-Eight has approved a long-term facility maintenance program budget for its facilities for the eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The various components of this program budget are attached in this exhibit. Minnesota statute, as provided, for the intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance budget is approved by the school boards of each of the intermediate school district's member school districts. Each member district may include its proportionate share of the costs of the intermediate school district program in its long-term facility maintenance revenue application. The proportionate share of the costs of the intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance program for each member school district is to be included in its application and shall be determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district long-term facility maintenance program times a percentage that weighs the two components of each member district's portion of the total special education tuition billing and vocational billing. The long-term facility maintenance cost shall be funded through an annual levy instead of issuing bonds. The inclusion of the proportionate share in the district's long-term facility maintenance revenue application for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen is hereby approved and subject for approval by the Commissioner of Education. How do you vote on this, Don?
I have a couple of questions. This is the first time we've ever had this asked of us.
This is the first time that we have an intermediate school district-
There are budgeting problems on the part of this board. I mean, in other years, they seem to have caught up on, on the budgets, and we haven't been able, have to approve stuff.
The long-term facilities maintenance is a new levy.
We have, we have a, we have a fund, we have a fund balance right now in our-
No, I answered my question.
But isn't this a new, isn't the long-term facilities maintenance levy is a new option that has just been added in the past two years?
By the legislature to the individual districts. That's correct. And we're using part of what we have access to because of that to pay for the intermediate school district's maintenance program.
And yet you guys don't own any buildings or anything?
Yes, we do. Yeah, the intermediate school district does have buildings, surely.
One real one.
I'm not sure how many buildings.
How many do we, with the district, the town square for, Town Square one, the Shakopee one, we lease?
That's a lease.
We, we, the district, the intermediate district owns the building in Jordan, the River Valley Ed Center in Jordan, and also the four oh one building in Chaska. And they actually own the, kind of the inside of the Shakopee Valley Green workforce. They kind of own kind of the inside of that building. It's kind of a weird arrangement with Scott County. And then the Shakopee Town Square, they do not own, they lease that. And as well as the St. Bonnie. There's a location in St. Bonnie that we lease. So the maintenance, the long-term facilities maintenance is for their River Valley Ed Center, as well as their four oh one building. That's, that's where the projects are. Then we own those buildings.
And these projects are just like we have here in our district, therefore, for security, for maintenance, installation of safety features, things that need to be done, just like they do here in our member districts.
I'm kind of suspect of a organization that the board votes themselves exorbitant expense accounts for their meetings, and, but I've been assured that this is okay, so I'll vote yes.
I'll, I'll let, maybe Tim could make one more comment about that. This was presented to the-
Superintendents, yeah, superintendents, we overlook it, and then the business directors, too, to make sure, you know, Southwest Metro stays lean. I mean, anything that's, if one district votes against something, it can, and I think we do a good job overseeing that. I know Sandy and I talk about it quite a bit to make sure that we don't do things that will hurt our district. Example, Minnetonka, when they applied to the Southwest Metro, we did not think that would be advantage to us. Actually, we worried that would increase our costs, and we're unsure about getting too big, so. It's something we closely monitor, Sandy. And I know the superintendents are very, just like the business directors, too, very concerned about extra financial costs.
You get audited, too, I assume.
Absolutely. And just as Sandy presented the budget to us and talked about the different line items for, for the, for the district of ours, we do the same thing for the intermediate school district as well. So all of that is-
Again, I'll repeat, I am very suspect, but I spent a good part of the afternoon talking to Tim, so I will reluctantly vote yes.
It is, it is online. We can see it if we want to, right? I'm assuming everything's transparent.
Sherry, how do you vote?
I was going to say thank you for the information. Uh, yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Next, we have the middle school handbook.
Yep, we have that, and it's basically, there's very little change, changing a couple of words about videotaping. And then under the conduct is just a change in language to lewd behavior, so really the same, no real change, but we need to get this approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand and seventeen eighteen middle school handbook.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. High school fishing team activity request.
That is correct. This is a recommendation to become a school-sponsored club activity that will be no cost to the school district. So similar to what we're doing with bowling, archery, that's a club. But it's, you know, in, in a way, you know, we have a ten-dollar fee, administrative fee, basically to help keep things organized. And it's still run through the activities department, but it's no cost, so. I think it's a good thing. We've got strong student interest, and it's another way to get more kids involved with after-school activities. Sometimes we got interscholastic sports. We've got fine arts and academic competitions. The more, more things we can get kids involved in, the better. We've added, you know, through the years on the athletic side, boys and girls soccer, dance team. We've got, with clubs, I mean, bowling, clay target, archery, robotics, fishing. So keep this in mind, as you want to know how we reprioritize the activities department budget, we keep adding it. It takes work. And things are dropping by the wayside, and, and that's one reason why we, Brad and Lonnie felt strongly about adding that position, but not increasing their budget by any amount. And you got to realize, too, lacrosse and boy's swimming are, boys and girls lacrosse and boy's swimming are going to be, you know, down the road here in time, added as a club and then probably as a sport, too. So it's a good thing, but it's still labor-intensive, so just keep that in mind. And again, these, when they're a club, too, it's no additional cost to the district.
Does this affect Title IX? Doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with that. That's just sports.
Yeah, it's a club.
It's a club, so it doesn't, yeah, good.
And I don't have our numbers right now, but we have excellent participation for, on female sports in our district.
Right, right.
Overall, it's, it's pretty close.
Well, there could be six females and six males in this, or all females first.
Those twelve males.
Is it?
Well, right now-
But I bet there's some females that would join in.
Right now, I mean, that's what the interest, but you say that, and we laugh about, but clay target, trap shooting, who would ever thought we'd have as many girls involved?
Archery, archery as well.
Archery, archery, we might have more.
More.
Yeah, more girls involved.
Yeah, so it's, it's awesome.
It's kind of a known fact that women outfish men anyhow, I think.
They don't need to go to class, right?
They just don't want to show them up.
I'll make a motion to approve the high school fishing team activity request.
Second.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, and the last thing that we have here is the Minnesota State High School League Resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. And this is done annually by all school districts, basically, so that they are governed by this association, the league, to have it run all the extracurricular activities that happen in the schools. So at this time, I'll consider a motion to approve the membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Be it resolved that the governing board of District Seven Twenty-One in Scott County, State of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletics and fine arts events to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education, as provided by the Minnesota statutes, that we will be renewing its membership in the Minnesota State High School League. And that the governing board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules, regulations, and said league, and all amendments thereto, as published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook. How do you vote on this, Jerry?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.